No, we didn't.
I'm up here.
Chill, you.
This is LaTisha.
Hi, LaTisha.
Fabulous. Woo! Nothing? Imagine this. Oh, yeah. Congratulations, that's how you end the paper.
I got a pillow.
Yeah, the teacher was trying to call in.
I like this. It's true. Yes, it is.
Working on issues first.
I know, right? All of them.
Whoa, okay.
Are these in the meeting?
LaTisha's trying to call in. Apparently, Ms. Williams had an accident. And so, she wouldn't get our message about setting up so she can call in. But LaTisha will be on as soon as we get her set up to call in. Okay? Is Ms. Williams all right?
Thank you. Scott Wilson just spoke on that Ms. Johnson.
You don't know the number? You need to tell me Ms. Johnson's number?
She was asking if she had the number.
Yeah, it was a real usual number? Yeah, tell her to call in again, is that what we should do?
The phone was not set up.
There's Ross, she's not going to do it. Good evening, excuse me. Our public, who are welcome here. We have another board member who's going to call in. And I failed to get the message to the rest of the team that we needed to be set up for a call in. So that's why we're waiting just a bit. Has anybody told Ms. Johnson?
She says she's trying to call in, but she's not going to go through.
It's, yeah, tell her to call in. Thank you, Mr. George, for helping us out. Can somebody help me with my chair? Nice, it's cute. Oh, you're good, you're good. Oh, you did the tomato tart.
Hello? I'm here.
I'm standing there, too. Thank you. Okay, thank you so much, Mr. George. You are on LaTisha.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you very well.
Okay.
And is there something in the background? You need to mute, right, mute your phone.
You're a little mumbled, I can barely hear you.
You need to mute your phone because we can hear you very well.
Okay.
Including some background interference. Is that good? If you're mute, okay, we're good, thank you. Okay, my notes. Okay, thank you so much for your patience. Good evening, I'm June Middleton Harrison. And I welcome to you all to our regularly scheduled February 5th Board of Trustees meeting. This meeting is called to order. I have not read my notes. Our team helped me with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Dr. Belcher, thank you so much. Dr. Belcher will introduce our Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight is my pleasure to introduce Ms. Kari Wallace. Ms. Kari Wallace is the daughter of Darius Pope and Ms. Katrina Wallace of Jackson, Mississippi. She's a hard-working fourth-grader scholar at Isabelle Elementary, where she exemplifies exceptional behavior and is a role model for many of her classmates. Her favorite subject is math. She also enjoys singing, dancing, reading AR books, and playing in makeup. She aspires to becoming a famous dance instructor and choreographer. Ms. Wallace?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the jurispric- original sense, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Would you please, Dr. Belcher, would you all please remain for a picture? And Mr. Figures? Thank you so much. Next, we'll have a moment of encouragement, words of encouragement from Cadet Ruben Banks. Cadet Banks is a senior at Jim Hill High School, is an STA president, and past governor of Magnolia State Mississippi Boys State 2018. Ruben serves as JPS's brigade commander and has recently been awarded the Legion of Valor. Ruben has also served for the past four years as a member of the United States Air Force Auxiliary Civil Air Patrol and a member of FEMA's Youth Preparedness Council. Ruben is the president of the Jackson Alumni Chapter of Kappa Alpha Psi Preparedness Council, excuse me, Kappa Alpha Psi Incorporated, Kappa League, and has been selected as an amazing team by the Jackson Free Press of Mississippi. Ruben was recently selected as one of two Mississippi and of 104 nationwide, two delegates for the United States Senate Youth Program. This honor comes with a $10,000 scholarship to a higher learning institution of his choice, plus an all-expense-paid trip to Washington, DC for Washington Week during the period of March 2nd through 9th, 2019. Please welcome Cadet Ruben Banks.
Thank you, Dr. Hairston. I want to start off by saying words of encouragement. My father once told me always to be encouraged. I never knew what they mean, never thought about it, until I broke it down for myself. A great message was once stated as, when I was a child, I spoke, thought, and reasoned as a child. But when I became a man, I put away childish ways. I placed these childish things away because of the clarity I began to see within my life. For far too long, we have been blinded by the childish and false nature of others. Because of this blinding nature, we are not prepared for our own grown-up ways. JPS is on a mission to increase success by providing clarity to the blinding nature that has been placed on us. Like APJ Abdul Kalum once stated, to succeed is our mission. We must have a single-minded, clear goal in order to achieve. And doing this, JPS is tasked with the responsibility for providing the resources needed to strengthen and improve tools needed for success. Stephen King, a well-known author, once stated, "It's best to have your tools with you. If you don't, you're off to find something you didn't expect and get discouraged." JPS is their tool, encouragement. It is the tool that builds us up and pulls us away from our childish nature. So I encourage and task you with this notion. Can you and will you be a tool to be added in someone's toolbox to help them not only gain clarity, excuse me, but also success? Thank you.
Go Titans. Go JPS. JPS strong, thank you so much, Cadet Banks. Let the record show that we have established a quorum. We have five seated members and one member on the telephone. Excuse me, six seated, thank you, Dr. Luckett, teamwork. We have the agenda before us, board members. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda as circulated?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Are you second?
Second.
We're moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The agenda has been adopted as distributed. Reading and approval of the minutes. Board members, you have read the minutes of our January 15th regular board meeting. Do I hear comments or corrections? Hearing man doing her motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing man, the minutes are approved as distributed. Attorney Turner, do we have a person signed up for general comments?
Yes, you do.
Thank you.
First is Kisa Harris and Seeley McMeness.
McInnes.
McInnes.
They'd like to address you on providing information about the Jackson Heart Study Science, Language Arts, and Mathematics Program for high school students, ninth through 11th grade.
Thank you. Mr. McInnes and his company, thank you. Ms. Harris, thank you.
Good afternoon, first of all, to the president and to the rest of the board. I want to thank you guys for giving us this opportunity to the parents and support people of JPS. My name is Seeley McInnes and this is Ms. Kisa Harris. We both work for the Tulu College Jackson Heart Study and also teach English at Jackson State University. What we want to do is talk to you guys about a program that's been excellent in our community for the past 18 years, going on to its 19th year. In early 2000, the CDC discovered that one of the major problems with heart disease in the African-American community is that we just don't have enough access to healthcare professionals. And so, one of the things that the CDC decided was to create an advanced program for high school students, ninth through 11th grade, to give them some of the most advanced exposure to math, science, ACT prep, and English. And when I say this is a state-of-the-art program, we actually spend more money on our science lab in two months than most school districts can spend for an entire year. When these young people come to our program, they're beginning with chemistry and they end with what's called CSI chemistry. So, in a sense, they're able to use chemistry to solve crimes. They get trigonometry, calculus. In my class, I teach the writing class. As ninth graders, they begin on a freshman level. And when they are 11th graders, they're doing graduate school reading and research. And so, what we want to just impress upon the board and the teachers and the community members know that this program exists. It is for advanced students. It's been traditionally for students who are already performing in the top 10 percent of their program. But don't let that discourage you. We want as many young people applying because we understand that they're untapped jewels here in the JPS program. And so, we just, we have flyers, we have flyers for the board and we also have flyers for anybody who's interested or you know teachers or you know parents. And just to get on you guys' agenda and get on you guys' radar that we've been doing this work for 19 years. And one of the things that we tell people is that the students who complete our program, who complete ninth, 10th, and 11th grade, at least 60% of those students get a full scholarship. And also, over 60% of those students, they improve at least one letter grade in their science and math classes. So we're preparing them for, right now, their high school career. But then, we're also preparing them for their college and graduate school careers. Because we understand this, it's one thing to tell the child, as we all say, "Do good, baby," right? But it's another thing to actually give them the resources and the tools to actually do as well as they possibly can. So we thank you for your time. Could you tell me at least quickly, we're on a time, the deadline and where they can apply?
Thank you, Mr. McInnes. Again, I'm Kisa Harris. And the deadline to apply for the SLAM program, as it's called, is March 26th. And the applications are online on the Tulu website. And the information, again, is printed on this flyer. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for sharing this information with our community. And I know our principals, our high school principals are very excited to learn about these opportunities. Thank you. Next?
Next is Alvin Jackson. He'd like to address you regarding the reinstatement of Mr. Jones as Forest Hill Band Director.
Great day, how's everybody doing?
Good.
Superintendent Green, Dr. Hairston, and the members of the JPS Board of Trustees, I'm Alvin Jackson. I'm the Forest Hill Band Booster President. I'm just here for the end game. I hope you all had the opportunity to pray because you all have the power to end a career or to further a career. So I just hope right now that you all take all the evidence that was given to you all, all the talking that came from the public, from we as parents, from the attorneys, from Mr. Jones, everybody who had the opportunity to give the deposition, that you all took that into consideration and let's move forward. I pray that we are able to move forward with Mr. Jones as our band director. We've suffered enough. We've suffered enough as parents. We've had students to drop out of the program. Mr. Terry did a great job by stepping up for our kids, but that just was not enough. We still had students make all city. And I hope that all of you all will be at Jackson State this Thursday at 7:00 PM to support the kids of Jackson Public Schools in the band programs. So I'm just hoping and praying that it doesn't end up like Kirksey Middle School or Cardozo that haven't had a band director all year. Band is like the gentleman that gave words of inspiration. Band is a tool that students can use. It's a tool. Most people know, I'm a former math instructor, have a couple of degrees in math. It heightens their math ability. So I'm just hoping and praying that you all decide to reinstate Mr. Jones. We're going to move forward regardless. We've moved forward all this time without anything in place. So if you all don't decide to reinstate Mr. Jones, I hope you all thought further enough to be able to tell us as parents, what are we going to do the rest of this school year? What are we going to do going into the fall? Because we didn't have anything in place. Nothing. Thank you all for your time. I really appreciate you.
I'm sorry, you made one comment and I wasn't able to hear, something about all-state and Jackson State.
No, no, all-city.
All-city.
Forest Hill has eight students that made all-city band. And that's going to be, that's going to be this Thursday at 7:00 PM at Jackson State University. We're still doing the best we can with what we have.
Thank you so much. I just, thank you.
Albert Jackson, reinstatement of Mr. Jones as Forest Hill Band Director.
Hey, how are you guys doing? My name's Albert Jackson. I'm a senior at Forest Hill. And I've been in band all four years at Forest Hill. And Jones has been there for every single year. And the second that he left, there was an immediate digression of our program. As most people, as my dad said before, some people use this as their tool. Most of the kids in our program are depending for that as a way to get into college or the way to pay for their college, in a sense. So, for us, most of us have, we're not as good as we could have been because we've lost a lot of progress and we've lost a lot of steam. We've also lost a lot of our members due to this. And in addition to that, we've been sitting in a class instead of being productive with our instruments. So, it's going to be really hard, the way that we're set. So, I really hope that you guys take into consideration of what we've been going through and reinstate Mr. Jones. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your remarks.
I apologize if I just pronounced as Kahinde Gaynor.
Good evening. My name is Kahinde Gaynor. I'm a father, parent of a Forest Hill band member and student. Actually wrote something down, so if I'm looking down, please forgive me. Good evening, JPS School, board members, and Superintendent Green. I'm here to speak as a parent of a band member and student at Forest Hill High School. I've been informed that our band students have been placed in concert choir classes, not practicing on instruments that have been purchased, some from our own pockets. Because we support these students, we support these band student members. They are probably more of a distraction now to the choir students that are practicing for competitions. Not only has my child lost the instruction, but he's lost the instructor. I won't pretend that I don't think about pulling my children out of JPS for another so-called better school district. When in fact, the loudest voices that want to see Mr. Jones gone, plenty of them are from those same school districts. And they, nor our leaders, have made a recommendation for not one new band member, not one new band director. I feel like the powers that be are not thinking about my child being disadvantaged by public opinion, politics, and even hate. Can our district truly afford to push away good instructors that are helping our children to advance and succeed? I don't see many teachers running to JPS. As a matter of fact, we have a teacher runaway problem with subs and alternates given to our students who honestly are not qualified to help them do their very best. We have forgotten our children. An opportunity to show them forgiveness, to show them how to correct a wrong, to accept responsibility, but more importantly, to practice grace. Mr. Jones has apologized for his offense when some of our own leaders in this state are unapologetic for their own offense. Mr. Jones has lost time, money, the opportunity to do the most good for our students, which is good for our community. This band program is helping our kids stay engaged, out of trouble. They understand that their grades determine that they could be a part of the band. We can look at who's committing some of these violent crimes in our city to know that we need every man, every woman that is willing to turn our children towards something positive along this front line. We are losing the best that our children have when we shouldn't be doing everything to keep the very best here. You have the power right now to give these students their best shot at band, soccer, math. I'm here today pleading with you to give Mr. Jones and our students another chance. We're part of this community where second chance saves lives and restores hope. Give Mr. Jones the opportunity to continue educating our children, modeling for them that in this life, we will make mistakes. But we can forgive, learn from it, and be our best selves. Right now, our children are losing. Forest Hill is losing. And our school district is losing another shining star that wants to help our children make it to their best lives. This community group of parents are here to fight for the best decision for our children. And that is to let Mr. Jones get back to the business of educating our children. I hope you make the right choice.
Thank you for your remarks.
That's all.
Thank you. Dr. Knox, do we have a review of discipline cases? We have none. Thank you. Dr. Green, superintendent's reports and announcements.
Meeting's board members and to the JPS administrators and staff and communities, community members who are here in attendance. I have a number of announcements that I'd like to make at this time. First, I want to note, as we all know, we were closed on January 29th. And so, we need to make that day up. And as indicated in our district calendar, we will be making that day up by holding a regular school day on Monday, February 18th. And because this date was originally scheduled as a parent-teacher conference day, we'll be working with school leaders to ensure that there's a plan to communicate with parents about their students' progress. And more information will be coming directly from our school leaders on that. And again, that's in keeping with the calendar that was adopted at the start of the year. Secondly, I'd like to just make a caution or share a warning with members of the community and of our JPS team. As many of you know, this is the time of year when many people start to contract the flu, they start to get the flu. We're asking that everyone, please be extra diligent in monitoring your own personal health and that of your children. And that you keep them home if they're sick. I've already heard from other districts in the state that are starting to see multiple cases of flu in their schools. And so, each and every one of us needs to do our part to keep ourselves and others healthy. And that's by obviously washing our hands as often as possible, sneezing into our sleeves, using antibacterial wipes and fluids, as well as just whenever we ourselves are feeling ill, staying home or seeking the medical attention that we might need when we start to see those symptoms. I'm making this announcement and I certainly hope this doesn't fall on deaf ears because every year, we start to see numerous cases of flu. And it becomes a major issue for schools in particular. And so, I do really urge each and every one of us to take it seriously. We will be posting some additional information on our website just in case folks need some additional reminders or information to share or to use individually. Do you care about children? Are you a continuous learner? Are you passionate about education? Then we're asking folks to join Team JPS. Jackson Public Schools is hosting a district-wide job fair on Saturday, February 9th, 2019, from 9:00 until 12:00 PM. That's this Saturday, February 9th, from 9:00 until 12:00 PM. It'll be held at the Cardozo Middle School, located at 3180 McDowell Road here in Jackson. It'll be held at the Cardozo, um, Middle School located at 3180 McDowell Road here in Jackson. That's again at 3180 McDowell Road here in Jackson. A $5,000 signing bonus will be available to qualified teachers. You have to check our website and, and, uh, check us out at the job fair for more information about that. JPS is seeking qualified applicants for positions in, um, also seeking qualified applicants for positions in food service, maintenance, transportation, and other support areas. To apply, visit our JPS website or call the Office of Human Resources at 601-985-3159. Again, you can call our Human Resources office if you'd like to apply for one of those, um, those positions. And now I have two extra special announcements that I'd like to make. Is Ms... Yes, she is. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Adrian McDowell of Forest Hill High School to come forward, please. Ms. McDowell is an English teacher who holds a master's, uh, in arts in teaching from Jackson State University. She's been an educator and a teacher here in JPS since 2008. Throughout her 11-year teaching career, she has been working, uh, she has worked to ensure that all the scholars she teaches receive a quality education that will benefit them not only in the classroom, but also in whatever educational or professional path they embark upon in the future. Her focus on high expectations and quality teaching and learning led to notable improvements in the growth of her students who were previously performing in the bottom 25%. Those scholars moved from minimal to passing on the 2017, uh, 2018 English state test. This school year, her scholars are achieving at the highest performance levels on subject area tests. Quality teaching... Quality teaching and learning in her class means she monitors students' understanding and adjusts her teaching methods. For instance, she turned a character study lesson into a mock trial. In her presentation, in their presentation, students had to become familiar enough with the text to effectively defend their positions in a mock proceeding. She practices, um, or such practices are in keeping with her belief that if scholars are not mastering a skill, it is our job as educators to come up with creative ways to help them to better understand. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me with a round of applause for the 2018-2019 JPS Teacher of the Year, Ms. Adrian McDowell. I'll ask that her family and the school representatives please join us.
Oh, me? Can I? Oh, I got to come too.
You just stand there and soak it all in. You know how much you love the limelight. Knotts. Mrs. Murray has served as the principal of Bar Elementary for the last five years. In her current position as principal of Bar Elementary, she has led the transformation of the school into a place where students and staff love to come, and into a place where high performance is the expectation. Under her leadership, the school's performance rating increased from a D, as in dog, to a B, as in boy. And has sustained a B rating for two years consecutively. The passing rate, the passing rate for Bar students taking a third grade, third grade summative assessment improved 10% in the four years since it was first administered. Additionally, the school has been recognized as a model PBIS, and that stands for Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. PBIS school by Reach Mississippi and for school success by the Mississippi Secretary of State's office. Principal Murray has instituted three programs to improve achievement, uh, at the school. The first of these is SWOP, or Students with Amazing Parents. As the name suggests, it's a parent involvement initiative that gives them a chance to experience the school day life of an elementary student. The Backpack Program, a partnership with the Mississippi Food Network and Christ United Methodist Church, provides backpacks filled with food to every student every week. In doing so, it addresses academic risks brought on by food and housing instability. I read, um, I read to this principal, makes Fridays at Bar very special. Students are randomly selected to spend time reading with the principal and, in the process, bonding with her. It's pretty special. The programs Mrs. Murray implemented have, uh, resulted in improved self-esteem and sense of community among students. Student attendance rates have increased and behavior referrals have decreased. Over the course of Mrs. Murray's 22-year career, she has served in Jackson Public Schools as a teacher's assistant, a teacher, a literacy coach, an instructional specialist, and now a building administrator. It gives me great pleasure to introduce to you our 2018-2019 Administrator of the Year, Mrs. Linda Murray. We ask that your family and other representatives please join us. Come on. Whoa, family. I think y'all was met. Come on here. to spend a little bit of time talking to both of these amazing educators, and it really is awesome that they are the ones who are being named and acknowledged this year, because they've done some truly amazing work. And we're just very, very proud to have them, uh, joining and representing us as our teacher and administrators of the year. So let's again, give them a round of applause. And that's, that'll be all.
Thank you. Those were great announcements. And again, congratulations to our outstanding teacher and administrator. We have information items only board from Joanne Shepherd, a proclamation. School Board Member Recognition.
The Governor of the State of Mississippi has proclaimed that this is the, well, next week is the School Board Member Recognition Week in the State of Mississippi. And as part of that proclamation, he urges, and we join him in urging, that we recognize the very, very important role that our school board members play in our school district. We are so very thankful. The district could not run, uh, without the school board, and you all are always so attentive and so diligent and so dedicated to making the district the district that it will be in the future. And so with that having been said, we join the governor in declaring, uh, February 10th through the 16th, 2019, School Board Recognition Week.
Thank you so much for that.
We appreciate you. Thank you.
Now, I know I speak for all of the board, it is, it is our honor to serve this community, and we pledge our, our highest effort. And, uh, so thank you so much for that proclamation. Uh, Mr. George, Ms. Miller, gonna talk about the E-Rate purchases?
Yes, Pam.
Please, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison, Dr. Green, members of the board. We are coming to you today to just give you some information on the E-Rate program, um, that the district is embarking on and some next steps that we will need to do in order to address the needs, uh, the technology needs of the district. So just giving you a little bit of background, E-Rate is a federal program that is administered by, uh, USAC, University of Services Administrative Coalition, something like that, USAC. And so what they do is they provide funding for schools and libraries all over this nation to buy, um, access points and, and, and internet technology that is needed, infrastructure basically, for school districts and libraries to serve their students. It is, um, we've been a participant in the program for probably eight to 10 years, and it is a reimbursable program that has allowed us to put, uh, access points, wireless infrastructure into our schools. Um, when we started this program, when we started this application round, it's a five-year process, um, we, um, got at least four, almost $4.3 million in funds that we could spend over the last several years. And that has been, um, has allowed us to put new infrastructure and technology in the, in the schools, wireless access points. It's allowed us to do some of the behind-the-scenes things that allow schools to have the technology that, um, our students so desperately need. We are, um, the money is based on a per pupil allocation. So if you recall, um, maybe a year or so ago, when we were talking about, um, our population, our student population, how important it was to make sure that our student, our schools are sufficiently, uh, staffed with students so that we can get those additional dollars that are needed for technology. We receive $150 per child for each school. So smaller schools don't receive as much money, of course, as larger schools. But we have been able to utilize this program along with some district funds to make sure that we do have wireless access at all of our schools. Um, but at this point, we are in need, um, because there is a very extensive RFP process, there's also another process that we have to go through now that involves the state. We wanted to come before you and just give you some ideas of the RFPs, the request for proposals that we have that are currently being out, that are out for bid. We now have two RFPs that will provide additional wireless access points. Those are those little boxes you see up in the schools that folks can connect to the internet. One RFP, uh, two of them will allow us to be able to put additional access points in our schools. Uh, one RFP, RFP is out, and we will be replacing network switch equipment, which is some of the stuff that goes behind the scenes. And then another, um, RFP is out for network rec, which are storage pieces. And Mr. George can tell you all about the technology piece of that. Um, so we receive our funds, we receive in two categories. We get category one, which is internet access and WAN, wireless, and networks, um, funds, and we get a 90% discount on those services. And our category two, which is this equipment that we're referring to, that the RFPs are currently out, we receive an 80% reduc, 80% price break on that equipment. This process, we wanted to bring to you because we will, uh, we will be bringing these RFPs, they're out for bid right now, we'll be bringing these RFPs to you in March, so that you can approve them, because there is a March 27th deadline to get this information to the United States, um, to USAC, so that we can make sure that we have expended all our funds. As I've said, this is a program, we've actually stretched our money over more than five years, because we've kind of done alternate years. So we have about $900,000 remaining that this, that these RFPs that are currently out will take care of. So we wanted to give you some information on E-Rate, the program, um, what it does with our district, how it supports technology in our students. And it is not for any building that does not have instructional activities going on. So it's not for central office or anything of that nature. It's all used for schools. And so, um, to just give you a heads up, that we will be bringing you these RFPs for your approval, they're going through the normal bid process. There is another step that we will have to go through with the State of Mississippi, because we're doing some things, um, with those bids. But we wanted you all to have a, a brief outline of what E-Rate does. Like I said, over the past five years, we've gotten about $4.5 million of reimbursements in our technology. Uh, our, our category one, which is our internet bill for C-Spar, we would normally pay about $34,000 a month for that. We're actually paying about $7,000 a month for that, and that is directly because we are receiving that discount because we participated in the E-Rate program. Um, so we wanted to give you this information, and, um, if you have any questions, um, one of us will be happy to answer.
Thank you for that information. Other members, do you have any questions? Is, is, well, this is, no. I'll say that. It's not important now. It's a technology question that I probably will not stand the answer if you gave it to me anyway, but that can wait till we get to the actual RFP process.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your information. Uh, Dr. Merritt, on the cap update?
Great evening to Dr. Harrison, Board of Trustees, to Dr. Green. I come before you to just give you a brief, uh, cap update. You have received, uh, one of your board material. Um, just, uh, to give you some, uh, general information, uh, all school districts that have corrective, uh, action plans, uh, the State Department of Education, or MDE, uh, will move them forward to the State Board of Education for approval, uh, in February. Um, we had, I did meet with, along with Erin Mason, who, uh, is a wonderful partner and with the edits. We had a brief meeting with MDE, there were very, very minor edits, I believe that was in December, uh, that we had to make to the cap. I was, we were probably there 30 minutes or less, and we made that, so, um, when we left, our cap was in good hands and in good shape. Uh, since that time, I do want to notate that we have cleared one standard, uh, which is 17.8 gifted education, and I want to give, uh, Dr. Davidson and her team kudos for that work that's done and, um... And prior to coming over here, um, I received, uh, a call from the Office of Accreditation that we possibly, and I won't name the standard at this time, we have cleared it. So, um, we are, um, we're continuing to work, meet, and collaborate to, uh, address all the deficiencies that are on record.
Dr. Merritt, you want to, uh, share from your conversations with, um, members of MDE as well as, um, members of the team, some of the, uh, standards that we believe are gonna be, will continue to be the greatest challenges to us, and perhaps some that are closer to getting cleared?
Sure. So, um, beginning with the standards that are more of a challenge, um, those things that are instructional in nature, um, which will be standards, uh, 17.2, uh, and 17, 17.1, let me begin with that, that's kindergarten 17.2, is pre-kindergarten. Uh, standard 20.1, which is the implementation of the instructional management system, and standard 20.2, which is the multi-tiered systems of support. Um, those standards are just very challenging when you think about some of the issues that we have, uh, challenges that we have in terms of, um, the teachers with zero to three years of experience, and things of that nature, and providing them the necessary support they need in order to be successful. need in order to be successful. That presents a little bit of a challenge, but we are addressing that. I will speak to standards of 17.6, federal programs. Not only, and we have cleared all deficiencies with federal programs that pertain to schools. The citations that remain on record are at the district level. So as, in addition to addressing the citations that are on record at the district level, we also had a monitoring review this past June. So we're kind of addressing two things, or we are addressing two things at one time, as well as, I believe it's the same with standard 17.4, which is Special Education. So, and then let me bring out standard 32, which is the Youth Detention Center, which there are two visits where MDE monitors them as well as the federal government monitors them as well. And that's standard 32?
32.
So those are some of the standards that are more challenging. The ones that we're closer to clearing, standards 6.1, 6.2, which deals with student records and permanent records, which is standard 8 and standard 14, those are kind of, when they monitor, they will monitor those standards together because they're all interrelated. We feel good based on the review that they did this summer on graduation records. We didn't receive any news regarding that, so we're accepting that as good news for student records. Standard 27, which is Activity-Based Instruction, met with the standard leader on yesterday regarding that. There are five schools, I believe, that have citations on record, but we feel very good that they have done well in addressing that and we will have them come back soon to look at that. Standard, as well as standard 29, which is Transportation. Standard 2.4, which deals with licensed counselors, they had a technical assistance visit on last week from MDE where they trained all counselors, elementary and secondary counselors, on some specific things that they requested assistance with. So we look forward to them working to clear those standards in the near future. That's standard. Any other questions?
This is a very positive report, that we are making progress.
We are making progress, yes ma'am.
And that's one of the most things we are able to demonstrate, that we are making progress in addressing these deficiencies.
Yes, ma'am.
We appreciate your work and the work of your team. Thank you. Board, are there other questions or comments for Dr. Merritt?
I just have one question. Dr. Merritt, thank you for responding to the questions. Regarding the timetable associated with clearing the more challenging standards that you listed, I see that the expectation is that they're cleared by June 30. Do you think we'll get there even with the 17.1, 17.2, 20.1, 20.2, or will there be ongoing work anticipated beyond June 30?
Well, I know that there will be ongoing work. Of course, per statute, the corrective action plan is done on an annual basis. And so it's the expectation that whenever we receive whatever the deficiencies are on record, that we clear them before the beginning of the new school year. Dr. Green, in our conversations, he and the team are putting together a very aggressive summer program, summer training and professional development to help address and support these things. So I know that anything regarding instruction will probably be ongoing, but there are some systems and structures being put in place at this time to help address them so that those systems are stronger moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Section nine, Consignor Gent, Items Finance, Ms. Miller, two items, ratification of accounts payable and activity fund and approval of the assignment of 16th Section leases, lease, a lease.
Item two.
Yes, sir.
I think I understand the protocol. I didn't do my questions beforehand, but I do have questions.
Oh, sure.
About at least two, maybe three lines.
Certainly. That is why we are here, Mr. Figures, and I know Ms. Miller would be happy to answer. Not all of our board members are as meticulous as Dr. Sevack, who gives our questions in advance. So she will be preparing. If she doesn't have it, she can get it for you. A yes, a B.
Yes, sir. I have two items for your approval, that's the items for accounts payable for December 15 through January 8, and also a 16th Section assignment and assumption of lease between Metro Marketing Properties and AmeriCap Investments for 16th Section land located at the corner of South Frontage Road, I-55 and I-20.
So go however you'd like to proceed, Mr. Figures.
So my question is regarding 404, 4007184 and 86.
Okay. Would you repeat that again, Mr. Figures?
Can you tell me who that is payable to? Lenovo. Yes, sir.
Lenovo.
So Lenovo is the vendor that we have been purchasing a number of our technology devices for students, Chromebooks and different devices, and that's what that is. And those funds are coming from title funds, federal dollars, for our schools.
All right. That was my first one. And my second one was, on those lines that I mentioned, one of them has to do with Brown Elementary and the other one has to do with Woodville Heights.
Yes, sir, that's where the funds were before we closed those schools. And so those items have gone and followed the students, but the dollars, because the budget was already set up there, we had to pay it out of that line item. That's why that's there. But those computers have gone to the students that were at Brown and at Woodville Heights. Just the way the budget is set up, we had to pay it in that line item.
Okay. And then the last and final is 400199. Who is that?
Okay.
Which is, it says Liberty Mutual Insurance Group.
Yes, sir.
But who and where are they?
That is our workers' comp insurance for the district. We purchase workers' comp insurance through Bottral Insurance Company, which is a subsidiary of Trustmark. Liberty Mutual, I'm not sure where they are headquartered, but it is our workers' comp insurance that we purchase annually through Bottral.
And the local vendor is Trustmark.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That answers that, I think.
Thank you for your questions, Mr. Figures. Other board members have questions or comments? Do you have a motion to approve items A and B together?
Some moved.
Second? It's been moved in second, but we approve both of these, Consignor Gent Items under Finance, the ratification of accounts payable for December 15 through January 8, 1819, and approval of the assignment of 16th Section lease between Metro Marketing Properties and AmeriCap Investments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Hearing the opposition, these items have passed. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you so much.
Now, Dr. Merritt, want to tell us about the signing bonus? I have to re-up my...
So the Office of Federal Programs has recommended approval of the Signing Bonus Addendum for the school year 1920 to be awarded to 120 new hires. So as permissible by Title II Funds, which is Professional Development Funds for Instructional Staff, we are able to also use those funds for the recruitment and retention of teachers. What we have done in the past is awarded or given a $2,500 signing bonus for one year. However, in reviewing what we have been doing, we thought it would be best, the dollars would be best used and we'd get a better return on investment if we raised, increased the bonus to $5,000 with a three-year commitment. So this is what we're recommending. I have worked diligently with Ms. Lyons and Mr. Knowles and we did review the data based on the vacancies that existed within the district and based on that data, that's how we identified what you see in the addendum, the teachers or the positions that would be eligible for the $5,000 signing bonus. Again, this is for 120 new hires. Our Title II allocation is almost $2 million. So this is something that we do see as sustainable over the period of time to support the signing bonus.
Are there any benefits other than the money that, and are we, generally, this generally works? I mean, do we get them and they stay?
Well...
The first time we weren't, we didn't have a time limit on it, didn't we?
Right. Well, what we had is some teachers will come for one year, get the $2,500 and leave. And so hopefully, after they are with us three years, they will be committed and they will have the, receive the appropriate support and all of that. So we are hoping that we will have better commitments from our new hires.
Thank you. Board, other questions?
Can I ask a follow-up? This actually may be a question that's better suited for Ms. Miller. Ms. Miller, didn't we, maybe in last year's budget, also provide a step increase for teachers at around that three-year inflection point?
What we did, Dr. Sevack, was we took the salary scale for teachers with an A, with a bachelor's degree, from step zero, from between step zero and five, and we adjusted that local supplement up so that we, those teachers, which are in the areas that Dr. Merritt was talking about, where we see a lot of our teachers in that first five years, really six at this point, will get a higher step increase based on the fact that they are here. So we think that that coupled with the signing bonuses will be encouraging. We've also done a study of metro area salary schedules for teachers at every level and except for Madison County Schools and two, I think maybe three levels way down, like years 24 and 25 with Heinz County, we are out, we are paying more for our teachers than any metro area school district. So we're very proud of that and yes, you were very generous to help us get that through the process, through the budget process. So we believe that that is a huge recruitment bonus, a recruitment tool for us to use to get teachers into JPS.
Thank you. And it was less about getting it through and more, it's good to see that, you know, we identified that as, actually really, district leadership identified this as a need a couple of years ago where we were losing teachers at the three-year mark. And it's good to see the coordination between the departments to hopefully increase the longevity of our new hires. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I believe we've stated this before, but just to, I don't think it's, you can never say enough about this. We understand that and research definitely shows that it's not always the pay that keeps folks in place. And so in addition to the work to ensure that we're compensating in a competitive manner in the area and the state, just also looking at the ways in which we support teachers through professional development and help them to see paths within the district.
Thank you. Thank you all for your help. That is an excellent reminder. Dr. Davidson, presenting on an approval of a memorandum of understanding between JPS and Heinz Community College for dual credit.
Good evening. Administration is requesting the approval of the memorandum of understanding that we have between Heinz Community College and the Career Development Center. These particular dual credit courses will be career and technical education related.
Thank you, Dr. Davidson. I didn't, I didn't see any evidence of this in your proposal, so it's my ignorance picking hammer and anything else, but I was just curious of, none of these type of activities are anything that we offer here in our own CDC?
Yes.
This is a qualitatively different and higher-level program for the dual credit. Is that correct or not? Help me understand why they are like and how they're different.
Well, this particular MOU is separate from or in addition to the current MOU that we have with Heinz Community College. But yes, we have offered these classes at our Career Development Center.
So, but these will be, these are currently at CDC as well?
Yes.
Through Heinz.
Yes, they are currently offered at CDC and the instructors are on-site at CDC.
Great, thank you.
You want to, just in case folks are wondering, why are we bringing this forward at this time?
We are bringing this forward because section five of our current MOU is different from that of the MOU that we are bringing before the board tonight. Students will actually be enrolled, or they are enrolled in these classes tuition-free. The previous MOU required us to pay tuition for students. This particular MOU allows Heinz Community College to provide this program free of charge to our students.
Great, thank you. And I was able to attend a community meeting regarding, I guess it was back in the, earlier in last fall, wasn't it? Didn't you speak? That's Career Development Center, right?
Yes.
That was a very good program. I enjoyed being there and visiting. Thank you for your work. Okay, Board, you have questions or comments?
I've just noted that on the dual enrollment program that there was reference to evaluation that had been done and the success of that, I was just wondering if we had any more data or information on what actually was achieved with our young people who are in dual enrollment?
We do know qualitatively that the program is successful. This year, we will begin to track quantitative data on the students and their performance.
Okay.
Thank you. We have heard the request for approval of the MOU between JPS and Heinz for dual credit. Do you have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing on the item passes. Thank you, Dr. Davidson.
Thank you.
We didn't do it as a consignor agenda.
Oh, I'm so sorry. We didn't act on Dr. Merritt?
Yes.
Oh. Do I have a motion to approve the signing bonus addendum for Dr. Merritt, or well, for the district, excuse me, that Dr. Merritt presented?
Some moved.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved in second, but we approve the Assigning Bonus Addendum presented by Dr. Merritt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing on that item as well has been approved. Thank you, Board.
And that was not a signing bonus for Dr. Merritt. Sorry, Dr. Merritt. Be clear.
It slides that one on end. Thank you for those corrections to the record. Okay, now personnel, Ms. Lyons, thank you. We have approval of Staff Personnel Matters.
Great evening. To Dr. Green, Dr. Harrison, members of the board, on behalf of the administration, I ask for the approval of Staff Personnel Matters as listed in board material.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lyons. We did receive that information earlier regarding Staff Personnel Matters. Board, do you have any questions or comments? I made my usual notes about this data and the status of where we are. I don't seem to have those before me, but I don't remember anything alarming. Other board members, you have comments about Ms. Lyons' report? Do you have a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
The Consignor Gent Item for approval of Staff Personnel Matters has been approved in second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Hearing on the item is approved. Thank you, Ms. Lyons. Board members, do we have other business? Hearing on, we were moved to item 13. Board members, do we have item to consider for executive session? Board members, do we have item to consider for executive session? Board, do I have a motion to close the meeting to consider holding an executive session?
So moved.
Second? It's been moved and second that we close the meeting to consider to hold executive session. Thank you so much, we appreciate you, but, oh, I'm sorry, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing on, we will close the meeting to consider a holding executive session.
Okay.
So we're closed. Thank you for joining us tonight.